I would like to call the meeting to order for October the 2nd. Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready with the greater community. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Our colors are presented tonight by the West High School JROTC Cadets with Cadet Staff Sergeant Jay Cole, Cadet Commander Sergeant Major Robert Kamjaasaw, Cadet Staff Sergeant Jax Dixon, and Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jose Morales. Would you please rise for the presentation of the colors?
Right face, face and arms. Requesting permission to post the colors.
You may post the colors.
Order arms. Post. Post. Face and arms. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms. Post. Colors, colors turn, march.
Would you please join me in thanking our West High Cadets? I am so impressed with our color guards that we have at our meetings every time. They do magnificent job. First item?
First item, under Student Success Report, good news.
Holly, would you come on down? Sorry.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the Board of Education. I am thrilled to be here tonight to share the good news of our district's fourth annual Legacy Fund Golf Classic coming up this Friday at Crestview Country Club, as well as recognize our valuable industry sponsors that ensure this event is a success. This tournament is sold out again for the fourth year in a row, which is exciting enough as it is. This blows us away with the support from our partners and that they capitalize on a day that is about so much more than a game of golf. This year's tournament has already generated over $104,000 in revenue for our Legacy Fund, and the proceeds will directly support Graduation Plus initiatives, assisting our students with early college, dual credit fees, and credentialing certification for students in need across the district. The Legacy Fund removes barriers so all students have the opportunity to leave our doors with market value assets. Joining me this evening are our valued district partners and our sponsors of the Legacy Fund Golf Classic. I will be bringing them up by their sponsorship group so that they can be formally recognized. I'd like to begin with our presenting sponsor, Credit Union of America. Here with us tonight is Mr. Bradley Dyer. Credit Union of America supports our district in many ways throughout the year. They're a true definition of a partner. CUA is just as passionate about educating the future workforce of South Central Kansas as we are. We couldn't be happier that CUA was on board for the fourth year as our presenting sponsor. And now I'll have a few words for Bradley.
Thank you. How's everyone doing?
Good.
To the board chair, Ms. Logan, the board, and the new superintendent. The first time we're doing this with a new superintendent at the helm, so this is exciting. Thank you guys for recognizing us. You know, Board President Logan said something to me here, I won't get into the details, but she said she remembers and she recently found her original CUA account card at a new teacher orientation nineteen-something. But what it speaks to is the strength and the length of the relationship between Credit Union of America and the Wichita Public Schools. And so that's one of the reasons why we decided to jump on board in the beginning. But the second reason why we did this is we recognize the value that this has for the people that we will be hiring in the future, the people that will lead our community in the future, and the people that will help to make this community better. So this was a no-brainer. Thank you for the recognition, and again, we appreciate you guys.
Thank you again, Bradley, and Credit Union of America for your continued support of Wichita Public Schools. Our legacy sponsor, Cessna Beach Craft by Texture on Aviation, is another one of our longstanding industry partners and has been a sponsor again for that fourth year in a row. Could I please have Michelle Gifford?
I just want to say on behalf of Texture on Aviation, thank you for the partnership. Making sure those students are future-ready is super important to us and the future generations of aviation and advanced manufacturing workers, so thank you.
Okay, next I'm going to bring up our believer sponsors. These are our $5,000 sponsors. Professional, if you'll join me here at the podium, professional engineering consultants, basis consultant engineers, Trane, Spirit Aero Systems, and NWI Aero Structures. Please give it up for our believer sponsors for the Legacy Fund Golf Classic. Thank you. Next we have our achiever sponsors. These are our $3,000 sponsors. When you hear your name, please come up. Elite Concrete, which I don't think is here, McCown Gordon Construction, WSU Tech, and Friends University. Thank you, ladies. Thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. Our next sponsor is our cart sponsor, Hutton Construction. Brandon, if you could join me at the podium. Hutton makes sure that we have plenty of carts out there on the course for us for the day. Thank you so much for your partnership. Our next sponsor is our golf ball sponsor, It's Hellis Construction. They could not be in attendance tonight. I'm going to move on to our contest sponsors. Our putting contest sponsor, Commerce Bank, if you could come on up here. And then we have our Hole-in-One sponsors, Schaefer Architecture, Insight Design Studio, Icon Structures, and Wesley Healthcare. So the awesome thing about our sponsorships this year is we always do great trips for our golfers. And this year, our Hole-in-One prize, we have four Hole-inOnes out on the course, and our Hole-inOnes are what is called a Share the Mission Prize. It's a $15,000 prize, but half of it goes back to the Legacy Fund if somebody wins. So the winner gets a little bit and the Legacy Fund gets a little bit, so we're hoping for some Hole-inOnes out there this year. Thank you, guys. Next we have our food sponsors. We could not do this day without having a little bit of food in our belly, so we're excited to bring up Building Controls and Services, Ascension Via Christie, Cargill Cares, and Incredibly Sweet. These are usually $1,000 sponsorships and make sure that we have breakfast, lunch, and snacks for our golfers throughout the day. We have our beverage sponsors, Highland Dairy and Fleecent Gooin. Congrat-- thank you. And last but not least, we have our prize sponsors, and we could not give away what we give away for our prizes if it wasn't for our prize sponsors. So if I could have Allen Gibbs and Hulick, RSM and Johnson Controls. These are usually sponsorships of $500 or more, and they allow us to give a little bit of extra stuff to our golfers as they come and support us for the day. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, sponsors, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. I want to thank each and every one of you for your support of the Legacy Fund and making it as wildly as impactful as we all envisioned. We could not imagine building our future workforce without your input and support. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and I look forward to seeing you all on Friday, October 6th, for our fourth annual Legacy Fund Golf Classic.
And I would like to echo that thank you from the board because this tournament, we started it four years ago, and we weren't sure we were going to have anybody show up. And we had lots of people show up, and we were just thrilled. And it's just grown every year from that. Four years doesn't sound like a long time, but it feels like a long time. And I will be out there Friday morning, as many of us will be, to greet you and say hello. I'm not good enough to play golf, but I certainly can run around and say hi. So thank you very, very much for helping us and sponsoring and doing all the hard work that you do for the district. Thank you. Okay, next item?
Next item, Public Communications.
And we do have four speakers tonight. I'm going to read this while our audience is clearing a little bit. Speakers' comments at the meeting will not exceed three minutes, and there will be a timer up on the screen, and will be limited to the registered topic and will not include personnel matters concerning district employees and/or matters that would violate the privacy of students. So our first speaker tonight is Rachel Mahaya. Rachel? I'm not seeing Rachel. We'll check back at the end. Kendrell Holly? Thanks, Kendrell. It's good to see you again. Yeah, that's good.
Always type it out till I make sure I hit my points.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, because he remembered everything about me when I called him to ask him to speak tonight, so. I do have one question. When I come up here, am I able to question the board?
No.
Ask questions, or is it just a speaking?
You can tell us what you want to say, but we don't generally respond to comments.
Okay. Didn't know that. Did everybody get a handout so I can start? Okay.
Okay.
All right, once again, Kendrell Holly, just a refresher. 14 years as a registered respiratory therapist in the city of Wichita. One of three certified asthma educators in the city of Wichita, and 48 years as an asthmatic. So I've got a little history. Once again, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is a follow-up to my previous communication with the board at the last meeting. I have since been in contact with Kim Cassidts with the USD 259 Health Services. I have learned that USD 259 does stock EpiPen for students who may experience an allergic reaction while in school, and I think it's time we should add Albuterol to that list. The handout I provided you gives you some of the statistics regarding asthma according to the American Lung Association. Now let's take a look at a couple of numbers. There are approximately 47,500 students in the Wichita Public Schools, and statistics show that one out of every 12 students has asthma, which equates to 3,900 students. This means that on any given day of the school year, there are 3,900 chances for a tragedy to happen inside one of our schools. The average cost of an Albuterol metered dosing inhaler is $45. There are 96 schools within the USD 259 school system, so that would equate to $4,320 to put an Albuterol inhaler in each school. Next time I come, I'm going to have statistics on these spacers, a device that is necessary, but health insurance says it's an accessory when you're using a metered dosing inhaler. I will also have a statistic from the Kansas Nurses Association, who are partnering with me, the Kansas Respiratory Care Society, because what we are trying to do, and I'd love USD 259 to be supportive, is I would like to introduce a little Weezer's Bill, because I want to help out my younger asthmatics. And before I go, I would also like to state, certified asthma educator, and I would gladly volunteer my services with USD 259 faculty, staff, teachers, coaches, whomever, to educate them on self-management of asthma so that we can help our kids. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the data that you've brought to us. Thank you. Our next speaker is Esau Freeman. Welcome, Esau.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak as a parent this evening on this issue, so I'll cover up my union shirt. But I wanted to talk a little bit about student behavior and just kind of what the expectations, I think, should be. We've got a lot of students that come to school every day and work really hard and do a good job, and I'm just afraid that so many of those kids get missed by all the disruptions and the other things that are going on in our buildings. And I know that since COVID started, you know, there's been some real struggles, but, you know, when I talk to my friends that are teachers and I talk to, you know, people that I work with and stuff, I have a real concern that the inability to, like, change this and get it fixed is a real major reason why we're losing staff. And, you know, I talk to so many people that are just like, I can't take it anymore. And on a personal level, I just, you know, wanted to bring it out and say, hey, you know, these are people in our community, and I know that, you know, hiring's difficult. I mean, even McDonald's is short-staffed. And so I don't know how we throw more people at it, but as a taxpayer, as, you know, somebody who cares about our public school system, I was a terribly bad kid, okay? I got hauled out of Rose Hill in handcuffs in seventh grade for telling a teacher who had caught a little magazine that I'd made that I knew where she lived. And what I meant was, I know where you live, I'm going to TP your house with my friends on Friday night, but that particular principal decided he was going to teach me a lesson, and he called the police and had me hauled out in handcuffs, and I spent the rest of the year going to school in Augusta, where I knew nobody. And things changed up and were really different. And unfortunately, what I see today is students making even harsher threats to teachers and staff and going right back to class within a couple hours. They're not getting hauled out in handcuffs because we do not want to have a school-to-prison pipeline. But the pendulum's swung so far back this way, and I'm afraid that our restorative practices are not getting the job done. I think if we were dealing with people who wanted to make a change, that would happen, but I just have real concerns that we need to tighten something up in our public schools, and we need to send a message to parents in the community and students that if you can come to school and act appropriately, you have a right to that education, but you don't have a right to come here and abuse people, talk to them any way you want to, and cause problems that disrupt the rest of your peers. So that's, I just wanted to put that out there as a citizen and not as a union rep that really needs to happen. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mike Harris. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the Board of Education. I apologize in advance for misspelling your name, Superintendent. I do know how to spell it. I just don't know how to use spell check yet. My name's Mike Harris. I'm here tonight as an educator, as a coach, as the founder and executive director of an educational nonprofit that serves students in USD 259 and across the state of Kansas, as the past president of the Kansas Speech Communication Association, a current member of their executive board, and also as a current member of the K-10 Board of Directors. I'm also a 259 alumni and a proud product of our special education program. But tonight I'm here as a parent. I'm here as a PTO dad, and I'm specifically here as a parent of a special education student to share my concerns with you. I'm also a debate coach. I'm on a timer, so I'm going to try to talk fast. We know that failure to provide special education services required under law creates problems for our school district in a number of certain ways. And as I provided for you, Suzanne Perez recently wrote about this, and I was alarmed to read the legal papers that came from this case from our school district. And in February, she talked about how the school district was ordered to pay nearly $250,000, as all of you are aware, for one student's expenses related to failure to be able to provide special education service. And that one student just represents one of thousands in our school district that require these special ed services. I know that our district leadership team led by Superintendent Beilefeld publicly recognized the importance of serving the needs of all students at Wichita Public School, which includes our most vulnerable populations, those with special needs. Laura McMillan and Alexis Padilla in March of this year talked about, Superintendent Beilefeld, when they said, and quoted him as saying, "I'm here for every student. I believe every kid, K-12, is important and valuable." I also know that some students need more intensive support than others, and how we provide that and how we go about making that happen is important, and that's why I'm here today. Magnifying this issue is the fact that nationally, special education needs are growing and has nearly doubled over the past three decades. And this is the problem we're seeing. We assess more students, we recognize their needs more readily, and we have more services available for them, which creates an ongoing problem. Those needs put us as a district in direct conflict with our Kansas legislators right now. And many members of our local legislation are, who are supposed to represent Wichita, seem to be representing positions in Topeka that are counter the interests of our schools and our students. Sean Loggins wrote in May this year, "The Kansas lawmakers entered the last legislative session without passing the $72 million proposed increase for next year." Remember that number. While this legislature has failed to deliver legally required special education services, the State Board of Education simultaneously recommended more than $345 million in increased special education funding over the next four years. Tim Carpenter in July of this year wrote, "The Kansas State Board of Education voted unanimously to recommend Governor Kelly and the 2024 Legislature embrace a four-year initiative raising state ed." Unfortunately, I only have 10 seconds left to tell you where we end up here. Today, we got to witness a committee hearing on special education in Topeka where Wichita lawmakers attacked special education funding. Our own representatives from Wichita, House Majority Leader Dan Hawkins, is leading the charge, along with his American for Prosperity friends and benefactors, who are pushing a cut to the state mill levy that will decrease the total funding for our general budget. Unfortunately, in a world where our general budget is already covering the excess special education costs, because for the last decade, our state legislature has failed to meet the legally required amount of 92%, we are cut. We are in a situation where we are left to make up that excess out of our general budget. That's about to go away further. I'll let you take a look at the rest of the things I wrote, and I invite a conversation with you in the future to talk about these issues. But I hope that all of you will stand strong on behalf of our students, my son, our parents, our families, and demanding that our legislators and our representatives in Wichita actually support and represent our interests when they go to Topeka this legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate the information. Next item?
Next item, under Education, Every Student Future-Ready Strategic Plan, Goal Number Two, Increase Third Grade Reading Proficiency.
Thank you and welcome. I've been looking forward to this presentation. This is near and dear to my heart.
Good evening, Superintendent Beilefeld, President Logan, Vice President Albert, and Board members. I'm here with Mr. Went tonight. This is the first time co-presenting to you, so we're excited to be here together to talk about an update for Goal Number Two, which is increasing third-grade reading proficiency for every Wichita Public School student.
Right, so thank you. We're going to get right into it. I'm not sure who Mr. Went is, but I am Chris, and it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. And so thank you, Board, and Superintendent Beilefeld, for the opportunity to talk about this very important goal. So we'll jump right into it. We're going to talk about increasing third-grade reading proficiency, our Goal Number Two in our current strategic plan. And by 2025, the third-grade reading state assessment score for proficiency levels of three and four will increase from 21.93 to 44%. And I want to highlight the importance of this goal. When you think about our students, one of the things that we know from research is that students who are not proficient in reading by the end of third grade are three times more likely to not graduate from high school. So if you think about our other strategic plan goal about increasing our achievement opportunities and having our graduation rate increase, we know that the work that we do is critically important for that to happen. So let's take a look at our indicators for success, and we'll notice that we have increased proficiencies in pre-K through five English Language Arts standards. Another indicator of success is increased proficiency in word recognition and decoding skills. And later in this presentation, we'll go into more depth about what that means and how we're doing that work in our classrooms, and highlight some of the great work that our teachers and our staff are doing for our kids. And then finally, we're going to talk about increased academic rigor and comprehension, and what that means for planning, what that means for instruction, and what that means when we assess our students and the work that they do.
All right, so where are we in this goal of achieving third-grade reading proficiency? On the slide, you can see that we have a number of years of data. Starting in 2017, 18, our students at third grade were 21.93. That's where we have our baseline. It's what we're working off of as we work towards our goal. You can see that we made strides in the next year as we scratched the surface of the literacy work that we were doing, and then we shut down. In 1920, there was no data, and in 2021, we did not assess 10% of students because as a my-school-remote student, it was optional to take state assessments. So 2122 was really our first year back with all students in our buildings, face-to-face instruction, and we maintained the 20.1%. Right now, we're sitting at 21%. Again, this is third grade only for last year, but we decreased Level One students by 2.3% last year as well. So we did move students out of Category One, which is the lowest level, into Category Two, Three, or Four, as we look at both sides of that coin, getting them to Three and Four, but also moving them out of Level One. So I really want to talk about state assessments and what it takes to pass a state assessment on this slide, just to give us a little bit of hope moving forward in this presentation. So we know that we use this data for policy. We know that it impacts what our families, what our community members think of public education. But I want us to remember that this isn't a one-time administrative assessment at the end of a year, and it is not the full scope of what kids in Wichita Public Schools can and do on a daily basis in our classrooms. And that should give us hope, as well as the upcoming slides for the increases we're seeing in other areas that we have been monitoring. So hopefully you remember me sharing with you when I came to talk to you about letters, the reading wrote by Hollis Scarborough. This researcher really looked at the complexity of what it takes to learn how to read. Reading is rocket science. It is not a single skill. It's a subset of skills that students have to use in increasingly strategic and increasingly automatic ways to become skilled readers, which is what our state assessment actually does measure. And we know this after 30 years of research or more. So we're going to use this tonight as a lens, looking at the rest of the data. But I want to start on the top because that's where state assessments live. So I want to bring your attention to the red strands of the rope and those five sub-skills that students must have for language comprehension. We know that background knowledge and vocabulary are interdependent. Our students can pick up a piece of text about traveling to Europe, but if they've never left Kansas, it's going to be very difficult for them to understand and make meaning from that text, even if they are a reader. We also look at language structures. Do our students understand grammar, syntax, the way sentences work to help them understand what they're reading, and verbal reasoning, which is just problem-solving skills through what we are... what we are seeing in written form? And lastly, literacy knowledge. How is a text set up? I don't know about you, but I approach a novel differently than I approach a research abstract. I have to change the way I read that text in both cases to make meaning. That is what a state assessment asks our kids to do. In a long period of time, they have to have the stamina to do so. That's if they have the underlying skills of word recognition. So, if we move to the bottom of the rope, these are the pieces that you and I have had conversations with in this table to that table a couple of times now. And we look at phonological awareness, we look at decoding, and we look at sight-word knowledge. So, what I'm about to share with you really kind of focuses there at the bottom of the rope, but we cannot discount the top of that rope, because reading does happen, both language comprehension and word recognition.
Okay, as we move to the next slide, if you remember our presentation last year, this slide might look familiar, not because we're lazy, but because it's that important. We wanted to make sure that we re-hit the opportunity to think about literacy as the gatekeeper and the opportunity that it holds for our kids. So, perhaps one of the most important indicators of a child's success by third grade is whether they are prepared to learn when they arrive in our pre-K and our kindergarten classrooms, and then the instruction that we provide in those pre-K, kindergarten, and first-grade classrooms. We know that the work that our staff does in those early reading opportunities is going to be critical to setting up the opportunities for positive results on state assessments, and then also life opportunities. Research will tell you that unless students learn alphabetic code by the end of first grade, that they are highly likely to have future obstacles in their way when it comes to reading. So, think about the importance of having students come to our schools and the pre-K, kindergarten, and first-grade staff, and the really important work that they do each time students come through the doors. One of the things that I want to impart to you is the importance of second and third grade. We talked a lot about word recognition, and we talk a lot about word attack skills in the primary grades, but that second to third-grade opportunity is really critical. That's when we pivot from learning to read to reading to learn. And it's at that point that we really want to have the opportunities for our students to have those foundational skills, like when you're building your house, so that those skills are solid, so that we can move to the comprehension opportunities, so that our students will do well in tests and in life.
So, we're going to look at some growth data. One of the things I was charged with is to bring you some progress. So, we are looking at three different categories here, ambitious growth, realistic growth, and less-than-realistic growth is not on the screen. I just to focus on the positive. How many percentages of our kids are making ambitious or realistic? This is specifically tying back to the bottom of Hollis Scarborough's reading rope, and we're looking here at the alphabetic principle. So, kindergarten letter naming fluency and kindergarten sound fluency, letter sound fluency. So, a quick mathematics, 70% of our students, this was last year from fall to spring, so 22-23, fall to spring, 70% of our kindergarten students made ambitious or realistic growth towards our goals in letter name, and 63% of them made ambitious or realistic growth towards letter sound. So, let that sink in for just a minute, because we're going to look at some more data here in a little bit that shows you where they started and where they ended, and that's going to measure proficiency. But we really need to look at both proficiency and growth. In first grade, we look at word segmenting. This is part of the rope, phonological awareness. 70 to 80% of students who get to third grade, who struggle with reading, have a phonological deficit. That has nothing to do with the letters and words on a page and everything to do with how they're hearing and breaking apart sounds and putting them back together. 70 to 80%. So, it is very important in kindergarten and first grade that we have strong phonological skills. In first grade last year, we saw 77% of our first graders make ambitious or realistic growth towards that goal. And then we move over to nonsense word fluency. This is the alphabetic code. I understand this letter makes these sounds, and in this word, it looks like this and sounds like this. And 63% of our first graders made ambitious or realistic growth in that category as well. I'm going to let Chris talk a little bit about the accuracy and fluency growth we're seeing.
Yeah, thank you. Really pretty excited about the accuracy opportunities that our students have, so I'll let you take a look at that graph for just a second. And what I want you to notice is the wonderful work that our primary students have achieved and the great work that our primary staff have achieved. When you look at the accuracy opportunities for our students, we in first and second grade have over 30% growth. And what that means is, from the fall administration of a test to the spring administration of the test, the students became, in both first and second grade, over 30% more students became accurate, and we count accuracy of 95% of the texts that they read being accurate or correct. If you look at third, fourth, and fifth grade, our intermediate grades, also some grade growth. One of the things that you will notice is fourth and fifth grade have smaller percentages of growth, but statistically, when you look at it, they're also closer to 100%. So, the growth rate's going to be a little bit smaller, because we're getting closer to that 100% mark. And as Amanda said, typically, second or third-grade students with accurate decoding skills, they're going to get those skills through daily reading, and students are going to have fluency skills through that work. And oftentimes, we think sometimes of comprehension, students that don't understand, they have poor comprehension skills, but in a lot of instances, that's not the case. Their word attack skills and the decoding opportunities that they have, they're just not there. So, thinking back to that house analogy that I gave you earlier, building the foundation of the house very solid with decoding and word recognition and word attack skills allows students to develop the automaticity that they need in order to read and read for meaning. So, as you can see by this data, the work that our teachers are doing in these early grades, the routines that we've developed, they are working, and, you know, the data proves that. One of the next steps that we're going to be focusing on is the opportunity for fluency. And just to break out the accuracy and fluency piece, we can be accurate, but be slow. Fluency oftentimes gets mischaracterized as, "I can read fast," and that's not the case. You want to read with a certain rate so that you can understand and get through text. But we don't want it to be like the end of a commercial when they give the disclaimer and it goes so fast you can't understand what they're saying, right? We want to be able to still make meaning from the words and have the accuracy and the automaticity so that we can make meaning of words.
And somehow, we still understand what they're saying, because we are skilled readers.
True as well.
So, let's look at, the next two slides are really important to our work. We're going to look at three falls and three springs worth of data. So, this table represents the majority of our predictive tests that we use in our district, and this is fall of 21-22, fall of 22-23, and fall of 23-24. So, the first three lines you'll see are kindergarten predictive screeners, letter name, letter sound, and word seg. Word seg was not assessed in the fall of the first two years. So, all you're going to see right there is what we started with this year. It's 51.3%. And then in first grade, you'll see word seg, which is that phonological awareness assessment that is so important, and nonsense word fluency. And then for second through fifth, you're going to see proficiency, not accuracy. Chris just covered accuracy. This is proficiency in CBMR, which is being able to accurately and quickly read text in order to support meaning. So, the green represents the growth we've seen in two years in percentiles across these assessments. You'll see our largest growth is in kindergarten. Our kindergarten teachers are working frantically. We know kindergarten readiness is important, but not all students are going to come to us knowing their letter names and letter sounds. And our kindergarten teachers are hard workers, all of our teachers are. But we introduced kindergarten routines three years ago, and they have started to embrace those routines in daily practice, and it's working. And you can see that in letter sound as well. So, the only one that we see that is not at least 1% increase is the fourth-grade CBMR. I do want to point out here that letter name, letter sound, word segmenting, nonsense word are discrete skills. It's an individual skill. CBMR requires multiple skills working together. So, we would expect to see higher percentages of growth in those individual skills before we would see them in CBMR, which takes a lot more effort for our students. It's a curriculum-based measure, so how many words per minute a student can read. It's a great question. So, let's look at three springs and continue this, looking across three years. I am most excited for all of it, actually, not just some of it. 30% increase in the spring for letter sound fluency, 24% increase in the spring for letter name fluency. Our kids are growing. Our teachers are working hard. Our coaches, our principals, we're going to talk about that here in a little bit, how we're supporting our teachers through instructional leadership. But you can see that things are moving in the right direction. And for some of these assessments, that's just across two years. 30% across two years is a big deal. So, I'm going to take us back to this rope and think about that goal of state assessments. State assessments measure the top part of the rope and the bottom part of the rope together. They measure skilled reading, which is fluent execution and coordination of both word recognition and language comprehension. We are confident, as we have worked in the bottom of the rope for the past two years and are seeing growth, that if we continue this laser focus on getting our kids there first, we will continue to see the growth that we have in our screeners, which are predictive of later success in reading. And we know that it takes planning for the future to do that. So, Chris and I are going to share just a couple of things that we are doing to continue the charge, to make sure that every child is a reader in Wichita Public Schools. First and foremost, thank you for your support of letters. We have a little over 1,200 staff in Volume One of Letters. We have 140 staff in Volume Two of Letters. I'm going to take you back to the rope for just a minute. Volume One covers the bottom. That's the blue part of the rope, and Volume Two covers the top. That's the red part of the rope. We have 65 staff in early childhood letters, and some of them have like a choice, right? They get done with Volume One, Volume Two, and we say, "You can continue your journey in understanding the professional learning around the science of reading and how reading develops, or you can do a book study or think." People are choosing to continue to do letters, which is really heartening for us. So, just as a reminder, professional learning is what letters is. It's not a curriculum. It's not a program. Our teachers are really learning about the science behind learning to read and what happens to your brain as you practice skills and you get better and better at them. It's to hone our craft. We know that it is our teachers, not our programs, that are the biggest success factor for our students. And we have, I don't know if, I can't remember who was there with us when the United States, I can't remember, Cindy Martin came to talk at Jackson about letters, and you heard Veronica Plank, third-grade teacher at Spate, and Gianna Wilson, first-grade teacher at Jackson, talk about how their understanding has significantly changed because of this professional learning. And they are seeing their kids come to them and saying, "I know what to do." And they might not have been able to know that before, so it is having an impact on our teachers. Secondly, we provide lots of tools and opportunities for our teachers in this district. We have instructional routines and resources that have been developed by teachers and coaches. We are using our decoding routines and have been for years. I joke with my team all the time that they could take them on the road and sell them, and districts around us would buy them, because we are ahead of the game. Not a lot of districts use the strong systematic phonics instruction that we do in our district. And our teachers provide feedback on that consistently. So, as small as an error on a slide to, "Can you give me more examples of what this looks like in text?" And our teams listen, and they provide updated adjustments based on what our teachers are saying they need. We also use proficiency scales in our district, and we provide resources for instructional framework. So, how long should I be spending on the bottom part of the rope in second grade versus the bottom part of the rope in fifth grade, where we really should be looking at morphology and language structure? We have literacy protocol that also supports our teachers in what to use for Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. We have rebooted our focus on MTSS, multi-tier systems of support, so looking at student data and progress monitoring to adjust our instruction along the way. And we have provided additional learning opportunities, thanks to SRF funding, with our kindergarten learning community nights, which at last count had touched all but seven of our elementary schools across last year, and we even have more coming this year, and our Tools for Writing night, that is being led by our K-8 writing specialist, who has a passion for understanding how writing and reading go together. Chris is going to talk a little bit about instructional leadership and how we're leveraging that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to our building principals and administrators for this month, because it is National Principal Appreciation Month, so shout out to all of our great administrators. Along with that great administrative opportunity is the opportunity to be an instructional leader, and that's something that we really value in our district. The work that we've done in our district and the work that we've done at the Wallace Foundation points out how critical it is to have good leaders in buildings and good leaders who know good instruction. We've had lots of different touch points for our administrators to have opportunities to learn how to become better reading coaches. So, for example, our principals have the opportunity every month at Principal Learning Academy to have a session that they get the opportunity to learn from Amanda and her team about the importance of reading and the work that we do. Today, for example, we had the opportunity to take a group of first-year principals out and see an exemplar teacher and teach, watch them teach kindergarten, and then have a debrief opportunity to say, "What did you see? What did you see that was well? What did you see that you want to take back to your campus? And what would you see that you would give feedback to that teacher?" One of the roles that's really important to me is to help our leaders not only recognize good instruction, but to give super feedback about that instruction. It's really important that teachers know what they're doing well, and if there are areas of need, to be able to provide those needs as well. Our assistant principals have the same opportunity monthly. They attend Assistant Principal Learning Academy, and I've asked Amanda to join us at the elementary level, and her counterpart does it at the secondary level as well, so that we can ensure that those assistant principals, when they're ready for the principalship, have the opportunity to walk into a building and lead it instructionally. The other opportunity that we've been very intentional about this year is our first-year assistant principals. We know that they're a little behind as far as the feedback and coaching opportunities that some of our veteran APs have had. So, I asked, and the wonderful Amanda Sharshel to my right agreed that she would come to our first-year assistant principal academies, and she's providing better conversations, which is a Gemini process for coaching. The idea is if we have our instructional leaders know good instruction and can give super feedback about that instruction that's meaningful and intentional about the work that we're doing, we'll move our buildings faster, and the obvious opportunity for our students is better instruction means that they're going to be more successful.
And our teachers deserve encouragement and feedback from their leaders.
Absolutely.
I think that's really important to remember, is that teaching is very difficult work. And sometimes, you don't see the rewards right away, but if your AP, your principal, comes in and says, "Hey, I watched that alphabet arc routine, and you rocked it, and I saw all but one of your kids finished it in two minutes," that teacher feels valued, they are seen, and they are heard, and that's really important in the grand scheme of just supporting them and retaining them in our district. I want to touch on our instructional coaches, because they do a lot of hard work for our district. We have instructional coaches who are experts in the science of reading. In fact, 32 of our instructional coaches at the elementary level are either national or local letters facilitators themselves, and they work day in, day out to get into classrooms and provide feedback to teachers. It is a partnership. A principal and their instructional coach, they have to be like this. We have to have collective clarity as a system, especially in leadership, on what we're looking for, how we're going to support it, and how we're going to encourage our teachers when we find it. So, I think we are laser-focused in our efforts. The professional learning we provide, the feedback we give, the instructional resources, the professional learning for letters, all of it feels very in line. It feels good to my team, to the elementary office, and I hope to you guys. So, we are ready to answer any questions that you might have.
And we do have some. Kathy?
Thank you. This is, I think, reading is the absolute most critical thing for a student to learn, because they're not going to be able to do anything in school if they don't know how to read. So, I'm, the data is superb. I'm, I have hope. I do have a few questions. You said that letters is not a curriculum. What is the curriculum, and it's in addition to letters, or is it incorporated into the curriculum?
Excellent question. So, we have actually two curriculums that we use for Tier One support, two major curriculums. We use our instructional routines for decoding, alphabet knowledge, syllabication and morphology, the bottom of the rope, for our word recognition curriculum, and then for language comprehension and writing, we use Journeys. That's a curriculum that's in adoption. Great question.
Yes, I'm familiar with that as a substitute teacher in other districts.
And letters is all the things we need to know to execute those lessons or teach those lessons smartly with kids.
Okay, and as far as the red and the blue rope, you've got them segregated. Are they taught simultaneously, or are they taught, first, we're going to teach you the blue one, then we're going to go to the red one, and then if you advance, we're going to go back to the blue one, and then eventually, it all comes together?
You're fellow good questions tonight, Kathy.
I, I always, that's me.
Okay, so, everything has to work in tandem. However, Hollis Scarborough separated word recognition from language comprehension, because we teach them differently at times. So, when you are doing the syllabication routine, the decoding routines, the alphabet knowledge routine, you're really living in the bottom, the blue part of the rope, but when they're using Journey- But when they're using Journeys and writing, they're living in the top or the red part of the rope.
And so is this individualized, or is this across the board for all third-grade classrooms? And if you've got a student that quite can't grasp this and they're tutored, are they tutored in the same way that the classroom is taught with letters?
So our teachers are expected to teach both word recognition and language comprehension and writing every single day. The time, so in kindergarten, it's 50 minutes, in first grade it's 50 minutes on the bottom part of the rope, because they're still learning to read. But as you advance into like third, fourth, and fifth grade, that time shortens, and more time is spent in language comprehension, reading text in Journeys, writing in response, et cetera. When students are struggling with core intervention, that's MTSS, that's when we start to look at what exactly are they struggling with? We give them diagnostic assessments, and we put them in tiered interventions, and that is a separate time of their day.
Okay. The instructional coaches, do they travel building to building, or does each building have their own?
We currently have 12 buildings that share, so we have six coaches that travel between two buildings, the rest are one-to-one, they're in their own building.
And what do we need to do to get a building to have an instructional coach every building?
Principals ask me that every day.
Oh, great minds think alike.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Diane?
Thank you, Chris. Great presentation. And Amanda, I was able to see this in a classroom that you escorted us to at Spate for kindergarten and first grade, where we were able to see the instruction firsthand. And so you mentioned it in the instructional routines and resources. Can you kind of paint a picture for the people that weren't in the classroom with us? Kind of the videos that we saw, the lessons that the students were doing and participating in, and just kind of the action of the room and what was going on when we were there?
Of course. So we specifically looked at kindergarten routines and first-grade decoding when we went to Spate. About two or three years ago, we developed our kindergarten routines, knowing that if you build a house on stilts in a strong breeze, it will fall. And that's the house analogy. Chris and I say that to my team all the time. So kindergartners engaged in the word recognition routines, they spend time with Hegarty, which is our phonological awareness curriculum. They then move into explicit instruction with letters and letter sounds. They talk about uppercase, lowercase, it's multisensory, there's songs, there's movement. In Courtney Santori's classroom, thank you Courtney for allowing us come, there's never a wasted moment. Those kids probably say their letter names and letter sounds hundreds of times within that 50 minutes. And that's what we need. If we think about the brain and pathways, we have to have that many repetitions before it becomes automatic for our students. In first grade, they're using phonological awareness, they're mapping words, they're reading words, they're highlighting words with patterns in text, reading connected text. It's all very systematic and multisensory.
But the students had mirrors, they could hold it up to see their face, to see how their mouth moved. They had a video that was playing, so there was visual aspect, there was the letter arc. There was a lot of things going on, and there was no downtime in the classroom. The students were moving task to task quite quickly, in actually quite an efficient manner for kindergarten. I was very impressed, so.
In September. She's been working hard.
She has an excellent classroom, and I did bring a reading expert with me that's outside the district, just to bring awareness to it, to let her see what was going on in the district. And she walked away very impressed with the curriculum, with the instruction that was going on within the district. So it was a very, very good use of time to see how that was going on. I do want to go back to the data and information that you displayed. You talked about the state assessments, and so we know how that data is gathered. But the data on Slide Six and beyond, how is that data gathered and measured?
Those are screeners, so they're predictions. It's like going to the doctor and saying, how am I doing? Our screeners throw us the first red flag that something might not be right with our students, as far as their reading journey goes, and mathematics as well, we screen in math. But those are taken three times a year. And what we really want to see is progress between screener windows towards growth, and eventually proficiency, which is our goal in elementary office and learning services, is 90% proficiency in some of those more discrete skills, and improvement in our CBMR, which is more complex skills.
Okay. And then outside of the screeners, are, what are the other methods for identifying struggling learners?
We use diagnostics in our district. That would be the next plan of attack, if you will, for planning out how we need to intervene with kids. So if a kid screens, the red flag goes up, something's wrong here, just like you go to the doctor and they would do an MRI next or run lab work. We give a diagnostic. We want to know where exactly is the reading breaking down? Is it sounds? Is it letter names? Is it when they're connecting the alphabetic principle? And then we take that and we use that to develop both core interventions, as well as like place them in interventions, which is what Kathy asked about earlier.
And if a student is placed in interventions, are parents notified? What is the communication with the caretakers for that child?
Yeah, it's a great question. So twice a year for parent-teacher conferences, our teachers should be sharing with families how their student is doing in reading. And in fact, the Every Child Can Read Act was passed here in Kansas, it went into effect in July of this year, and that requires us in third grade to make sure our families know where their student is at, how we're intervening, and the progress of those interventions.
And how is that followed up with?
Tell me more about that question.
Like if a parent has a third grader that has been flagged for needing intervention, what are the steps, like walk through a parent if their child's now going into the fourth grade? What are the steps being taken to stay on top of that intervention?
I think it's probably pretty consistent at every building, that we are consistently sharing data with parents and updates on how students are doing. I know that in buildings that I've been in as an assistant principal or principal in the past, it was making sure that teachers were sharing celebrations of student growth, especially if they moved from like a Tier Three intervention into a Tier Two intervention, like, hey, Mom, you're working hard, we're working hard, and look, it's paid off. And now they're going from a phonics intervention to a fluency intervention, and that's awesome. Systematically, I think that's mainly through parent-teacher conferences and progress reporting on our proficiency skills.
And would that be through parent view, or emails, phone calls?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, good questions.
Thank you guys very much. Excellent presentation.
Thank you. I echo that. This is an excellent presentation. I'm thrilled, because I've been watching and working from the board for 12 years now, and I've watched as we've put piece after piece after piece in place to get us to where we are today. Because when you talk about, all of our teachers are being trained in letters, and all of our teachers use the same reading curriculum. When I came on the board, there were 125 different curriculums in this district, and that's not true today. And that's nothing but good for kids, because we have a really high mobility rate in this district. But the kids move to our own buildings, and their data follows them. So the teacher doesn't get a child and say, where are they? I have to do 10 screeners with it. They go into their record and it's there, and they know where to start and what to do. And I challenge anybody that wants to come into our schools, call a school, set up an appointment, go in and look at what's going on in any school in this district, and you're going to see the same kinds of things happening in reading. I think that's what impressed Cindy Martin, the Deputy Superintendent of Education from Washington DC. She saw that we were district-wide. It wasn't a school doing this. You know, you go to Spate, Spate's the shining star. Well, no, they're not. Everybody's doing the same thing. And that warms my heart, because it's good for kids. And the data is supporting that it's good for kids. We're not there yet. We don't claim to be there yet. We're still struggling in getting our state assessment scores and everything else, but all of our data is pointing in the right direction. And that's exactly where we need to go, and that's exactly why we don't change course. We keep going, just one day at a time, and keep training, and keep working, and keep moving. You know, the more people that know how to do this, the better off our district is as a whole. So thank you, thank you to your teams, thank you to the buildings and the administrators. We're on the road to do good, good things for kids, and your presentation shows that. Thank you very much. Hazel?
Thank you for your presentation. I remember last year when we went to the trainings, we visited when they were training the teachers in this program, and it's really exciting to see these numbers. One question that I have is, excuse me, you show proficient in the assessment year of 2017, back to 2017, 2018. So these kids would roughly be freshmen in high school, right? Do we have any data of where they are now?
So once you get to middle school and high school, some of the screeners that we would use in the state assessments, we would use change either what grade level they're assessed in, or even what they're testing. So it would be easy to look at that freshman group and say, if they took a state assessment, let's compare how they're doing now to then. I think that would be possible, but there are some tests that don't follow them all the way up.
Got you. Okay. I was just wondering if we had a way to see if they advanced, or if they regressed, or how they were doing, but thank you very much.
I think we'd also look at like the broad scope of what our high schoolers are doing at that point too, right? Not just a state assessment, but what classes are they enrolled in? How are they doing on their grades, et cetera?
I see no more questions. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you. Next item?
Next item under education, outcomes of summer 2023 learning opportunities.
You just scooted chairs.
She's playing magical chairs tonight. She thinks she's done with the fun.
Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Beilefeld, President Logan, Vice President Albert, and Board of Education members. Thank you for allowing us to continue the conversation on the outcomes of our summer school opportunities from 2023. So I'll be continuing the fun that Lauren started last board meeting. And I didn't let her go too far, but Amanda's also joining me to share some information about the elementary aspects of our summer opportunities. So we established a vision last year for our summer school 2023, that it would fuel a joy for learning and education through authentic experiences that connect students to our community, support academic growth, and bridge the gaps in learning. So we wanted our summer programs not just to focus on one aspect or the other, we knew that there were a variety of students needing a variety of things. So when we're establishing these programs, from mandatory and required programs to just what is it that our students need, we wanted to establish a vision that really encompasses all of that. So it takes quite a few staff members to support 8,000-plus students served in our variety of summer programs. So just a little tidbit of information, over 1,700 employees were hired just for summer programs. That is down from the previous summer. As you all are aware, we begin the planning process for the next summer school like in July. So we finish and wrap up most summer programs in June, and I pull everyone together, all right, let's debrief and just start planning for the next summer. So it's really a year-round process, but as we look at the feedback and look at how things went from the previous summer, we're always trying to be mindful of how can we do more with less. So we actually hired less staff this last summer, but supported more students, and we'll share a little bit about those pieces of information in just a moment. So with our elementary summer program, to start off there, we did have a little over 11,000 students who were eligible for summer school this year. We changed, again, that whole planning process. We did change the way we qualified students. It used to be some risk on that screener data that Amanda just shared with you, and then we moved into, we wanted them to be at least high-risk in one category, and it could be some risk in other categories. And we were intentional with that, just because we knew that we only have so many staff and so many programs to support students, and we were trying to keep within the same budget and some of the same guidelines. So we did tweak our qualifications, so if you compare any numbers from last summer to this summer, that's why you'll see a change in fewer students who were eligible. We did enroll 2,835 students, which is actually an increase from last year. So last year, we targeted more students, but we had less students this summer who were targeted and enrolled more. So again, we put in some intentional efforts in place to get kids to come in those summer programs, because we want to utilize these opportunities to their fullest and get in as many students as we can for remediation, enrichment, et cetera. So that was about 24% of the students who were eligible that enrolled. We had 1,518 students who quote-unquote attended, and we changed the way we looked at data a little bit this year as well. We chose to focus on outcomes of the spring screener data to the fall screener data. And we also decided, you know, to really see if our summer programming was effective, we wanted to look at data for students who attended 14-plus days. So we had 16 total days for our elementary summer program, and we were intentional in looking at the data of those who attended 14-plus. So we actually had more students who attended, but 15, 18 is what we looked for.
I think that's really important, as I share some of the data, that attendance, because that is the threshold of chronic absenteeism for summer school. So we know that we can have the best programs, and the best teachers, and the best experiences, but if kids are not in school and accessing that instruction, then it's going to impact our outcomes. So I appreciated the change that DeeDee moved forward with, just looking at the kids who actually were in summer school. So this was year two for us for elementary, and our schedule did not change much. We did a little adjusting based on teacher feedback, but really, we kind of stuck with our instructional routines from the last summer, because we did receive good feedback from the staff who taught. This first piece of data is talking about what kids experienced right when they came in, and that is our social-emotional circles with the power of a really powerful read-aloud, great literature, paired with ways to quickly make connections with kids who might have been coming from all over into this one teacher's classroom, who they did not know, and their neighbor might be someone they did not go to school with in their normal school year too. So it's important to us to make sure that when they hit our doors, we're building community. So this question really talked about, did that social-emotional piece help build quick community and rapport and relationships amongst the teacher and the students in the classroom? And you can see that 93% of our staff that taught summer school agreed with this, and these are just some of the comments that we pulled out of the survey. Helped with focus to get started, getting to know them and being respected by their peers, allowed them to build community, but also teach life skills, which is what that social-emotional time is really for, and just enjoy the time to incorporate literature on top of that time and just like discussion, good questions around SEL skills. We did not make any changes to word recognition, we did not make changes to comprehension and writing, and we didn't make changes to mathematics. We made slight adjustments, like beefed up some of the lessons here and there, chose a different book because we couldn't order the book we'd had last summer, those types of things, but for the most part, it stayed very similar, which I think, going back to Cheryl's comment about variability, if I know I'm going to be teaching the same thing, it helps teachers to feel comfortable with the routines and procedures, and students as well. So you can see that the question asked here was, did the training that was provided for these sections of the day leave staff teaching summer school feeling prepared, feeling competent to deliver the routines and work with our students? So this was 90%, and I just broke it down into just a couple of comments. That word recognition piece really sticks out to me, because it talked about continued structure. So we're not changing what kids are doing in the summer school and having them learn a new structure, we're keeping the structure the same, which benefits our students. And it was what students needed, comprehension, great strategies, engaging books, incorporating writing. I love the second part of that first bullet, I'm going to use them in my classroom this year, that's what we want to see. And then math, allowing them time to practice those necessary foundational math skills, addition of subtraction as well. We made a couple of major adjustments. The first was to increase fluency. You just saw our data. Where do our kids need it? After they're accurate, they need it in fluency. So we actually intentionally planned fluency for first through fifth grade this year and added that to summer school. And the question here was, did this support what your students needed? And 92% of our staff said yes. It is miles on the tongue. It is the practice they need, it's the repetition that our kids have to have if we're going to see them sustain in summer school, which is the number one goal, sustain, don't lose, or increase. The second major adjustment we made was to add specials classes. So for most buildings, this was PE, art, and music, but there was occasionally a STEM or a library teacher that was. So for most buildings, this was PE, art and music, but there was occasionally a STEM or a library teacher that was hired to support. All students receive specials, including pre-K. It's interesting, I didn't put it up here, but some of our specials teachers were like, pre-K, whoa, never done that before. But in the comment section, they were like, I love teaching pre-K. I'd love to teach pre-K all the time. So we, we want to over some people with pre-K specials. This did allow for better engagement. So in the afternoon last year, it was just a lot of more instruction. And this gave students, not a break necessarily, but just something different for their afternoon summer school. And it was 97% agreed that this helped with student engagement in the afternoons. And then the last major adjustment we made was to arts partners. Kuda sat with you last year and talked to you about arts partners. They were doing a lot of virtual pieces. We removed the virtual arts partners. We had artists in buildings. And when the artists weren't available, they were, teachers were given the lesson plan so that they could teach the lesson plans. The virtual experience was eliminated. And you can see here that 97% of our staff thought that change was a needed change for their students. So last but not least, I'm going to talk to you about sustaining, decreasing and increasing. So this is representative kindergarten, representative of kindergarten, first and second through fifth. So I've included letter name, letter sound on the top. First grade, I included nonsense word fluency. And then for second through fifth, I included both CBMR and A-reading. We didn't necessarily use A-reading as a qualifier for summer school, but because of those language comprehension lessons, I thought it important to look at the growth for students for A-reading as well, because that's a comprehension based screener. So as you can see here for kindergarten, we had 74% of students who either increased or sustained in letter name, letter sound. So the goal for summer school is always to prevent the slump or hopefully increase. 80% of our first graders either sustained or increased. And the, the biggest piece of celebratory data here is 96% of our second through fifth graders either sustained or increased on their CBMR. When we look at A-reading, it's 99% of students either sustained or increased in A-reading, second through fifth.
So for our sixth through eighth grade, we had 3,300 plus students who were eligible. Of those 3,300, 486 enrolled, which was roughly about 14.5%. That is down from the amount of students who enrolled last year. However, that's a higher percentage of the students we actually targeted. And of those 486, roughly 221 attended 14 plus days. So we're looking at data as a whole for the amount of students. There was one change to our sixth through eighth summer school last year, or one of the major changes, I should say, is that we chose to utilize the avid STEM curriculum. So elementary does have more of an emphasis on the academics where middle school does have an academic focus, but as you probably remember from Lauren sharing, they did a lot more hands-on STEM type activities as well as several field trips to get them out into the community. So again, going back to our vision, trying to build that, those community partnerships, get them out and get them experiences to, they can tie back and build that prior knowledge and tie it back to their academics. So one of the things that we changed in the classroom though, was utilizing the avid STEM curriculum. And so this is a little bit of staff feedback due to this change. 94.7% of our staff agreed or strongly agreed that the STEM lessons enhanced the summer school experience. And 100% strongly agreed or agreed that the materials were easy to use and find and access. So you know, we're thinking about our students, but we're also thinking about our staff because we very much appreciate them giving their time in the summer to come and educate our students. And we want to make sure it's a time that they're also enjoying and having fun and bringing back things that they can utilize during the year, but we also want to make it an effortless experience as well. So we appreciated that feedback from them. Piggybacking off of what Amanda shared earlier is the academic data. As you can see for our sixth through eighth graders, again with the research supporting that summer school is to prevent that summer slide. So hopefully we're ending the year and starting the year minimum without that decrease in skills. And as you can see from this data of the students in A-math, A-reading and CBMR, we did just that. So increases are awesome, but we really want to bare minimum maintain. And again, the data was based on students who attended 14 more days. So overall, combining Amanda's information and my information, and we're looking at comparative tests across the board with the elementary and middle school. 912 students, 97% sustained or increased. A-reading, 97% sustained or increased. And A-math, 97% sustained or increased. So I just want to give a shout out and a thank you to just all of our teachers, families, you know, for allowing us to have time with your students because that, again, we end the year, we want to start the year bare minimum where we ended. And we just, you know, there's a lot of time and effort and hours that go into planning and creating summer programming. And we're accomplishing, you know, what we're, what we're setting out to do. We do have some other summer, oh, sorry, parent survey results. So to also share how our parents felt about our summer programming. Some of the questions that were asked, teachers made the classes fun and almost 97% of parents agreed. And I threw in a few little comments there from our surveys as well. Your child's teacher was able to meet their needs. Almost a little over 92% agreed. And I was pleased with the summer program that my children attended. And again, 92%, almost 93% agreed. And so again, all the, all the planning and efforts and hard work, it feels good to hear that parents feel, feel the same. Fantastic job 259. And my, my child loved the camps. Thank you. Looking ahead though, as we roll off the ESR funding, we want to, I know, I know, right? As we roll off the ESR funding, we see the results and the impact we're making through our summer programming. So the intention through our already started summer planning is to try to continue what we're doing well, but knowing that realistically we have to reduce the scope of some of our summer programs. We're going to look at all of our funding sources that may be available to continue to support the work. But we may also have to think differently about how we target and who we target for our summer programs, knowing that there's not this large amount of funding that will be available in future years. Some of the ideas, we're still in the pre-planning stages, but some of the ideas that we've thought about, targeting students that are at our identified ISI and CSI buildings. That's our intensive support and improvement or comprehensive support and improvement identified buildings. Students that are high risk in both reading and math. So as I mentioned earlier, we allowed, we targeted students who were high risk and some risk. But maybe we go to high risk and high risk. Maybe intentional about the eighth to ninth transition or second graders who are not proficient in reading and making sure that we, we get them to proficiency over the summer. So there's a lot of ideas floating around because we also want to utilize summer 2024 as just building something that can be sustained or replicable in the future. So we don't want to just again, build this grandiose program that we can't sustain in some form or capacity. So those are also a part of our planning conversations at the moment. I do want to share some data on some of our other summer programs. So early college academy housed at Northwest, we served 189 students in early college academy. Our migrant summer program, which is a required summer program through the funding, there are 135 of our migrant students attended a summer school and we did provide 213 home visits. There were a total of seven languages spoken and of our high school students attending, they did receive half credit. 31 received half credits. And the credits that are reported out tonight are in addition to what Lauren shared last month. And you remember the very large amount of credits that we had recovered or gained as original credit. These are in addition to those numbers that Lauren reported last, last month. One of our ESR funded summer programs that we did add was ESOL programming for our newcomers called the SEEP program. 144 students qualified for this program. And again, this program allows them to earn an original credit, half credit. Through that program, 14 languages were represented in 18 countries. And we did have 59 completers. So while we had 144 enrolled, 59 actually completed all of the requirements, earning a total of 29.5 credits in that particular program. We hosted our Native American program again this summer. That is, oops, I'm sorry. That is three one-week camps. So one week we target third through fifth graders and activities specific to them. One week six through eight, and then another week of high school students. High school was new this year. Typically, our program has been geared towards K-8. But we wanted to offer some opportunities for them to participate in some different activities. We also, knowing that these were just one-week intervals, we also structured it in a way that would allow the students in these different levels to also attend the other summer programs if they wanted to. And that was a total of 65 students. In our Stealth Summer Program, which is a grant funded program, we served or had 374 students enroll and 295 were present on a regular basis. And we had that program and throughout the school year, several buildings participate in this. Adams, Anderson, Cleveland, Gordon Parks, Ortiz, Spate, Washington and White were the homes for it this summer. Some of our special education programming, we did offer within reach summer programming again this last summer. And again, that's that paper pencil portfolio, computer-based option for our students with disabilities to recover credits. We served 116 students and those 116 students recovered 215.5 credits. Youth Education and Summer Socialization is a partnership with AbilityPoint where we target academic skills in the morning and social skills in the afternoon by way of participating in the community. And we served a total of 86 students in that program. 47 of those are from 259. So this is one of our summer programs that allows students from outside of the district to participate. Extended School Year, which is an IEP-based service and again, for maintaining progress on their identified IEP goals. We served 374 students. And then Scope, which is one of our gifted enrichment programs, served a total of 179 students and 118 of those were from 259. So that's our other summer program that allows outside of the district students to attend. Okay, that was, that was a lot of different summer programs. I feel like Lauren, probably the equivalent to all of her high school programs last month, covered all the rest of them. But we served a total of over 8,000 students in all of our summer programs. And I always love this tidbit of information that Lauren tends to, tends to throw out, but this would be 17% of our district. So that's why it takes a full year of planning to create all these different programs and our main programs for this many students, so roughly 17% of our population, bigger than other districts that we, that we partner with. All that planning is absolutely necessary. Before we close tonight's presentation on our summer opportunities, I do want to take an opportunity to give a shout out to our community partners. And we just want to say thank you so much for hosting us and being a part of our summer school. We could not pull off this type of programming for 8,000 plus students without their help. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And then lastly, thank you to you all for supporting this work and continuing to be advocates for meeting our students' needs. Again, we wanted to fuel a joy for education throughout authentic experiences, connecting students to the community. We felt like we did that academic growth. Think we can check that off the list and bridging some gaps as well. So thank you so much for allowing us to share and we'll be happy to take any questions or thoughts at this time.
Kathy?
Thank you. I won't be long. Thank you. Great presentation. I'm a recipient of a summer school in the fourth grade. I read and I read words, but I didn't understand what I was reading. And so I took reading comprehension and that taught me how to love to read. So this is great. Okay, I didn't find much joy in going to summer school though, because my friends got to play and I couldn't. So I want to ask you, is summer school offered freely? Not freely like it's free monetarily, but is it a state law? Is it mandated that we as a district have to offer summer school?
For some programs, but I'm not sure, just in general, I would have to check on that.
So the bare minimum, because you were talking about losing some of our ESR funds. What is the bare minimum that the state would mandate that we would have to offer? If, if that would be a great question if we could find that out too. And I, and I love on-
Kathy, I think some of the special education, the ESY and then the migrant program, some of those are required. And we've been doing those pre-COVID. As far as the gen ed, summer school, I don't believe are required to by this day.
So the district, because we're so wonderful, we are the ones who have initiated this offer for the students that are eligible, which leads me to another question. Good segue. How do you become eligible for summer school besides failing?
For elementary, it's based on the screener data that we covered in the reading presentation. So if you're sitting at high risk in the spring, after full year's worth of instruction in first grade, let's say, we want you to come to summer school.
And is that encouraged by the district to the parents and the family?
Yes, we had to heavy advertising.
Advocacy for-
Bring them on, let's go.
For that child.
Yeah.
And when they get up into high school, I do understand that if there is a student that is minus a credit and they will not be able to walk with their class, the summer school then is offered. Is, is that a mandate to get that student to get the diploma or is that something that they can say, hey, I want to do this? Tell me that process. What's that look like?
The answer to your question about who is different at each level. So Amanda answered your question about elementary. It's based on the screening data. At the high school level, it's credit deficiency. And we're talking for kind of gen ed type students. So if you're, if you're behind in credits, we want you to come. We can't require it because if students don't come, they don't come. They also do what's called original credit, which is getting, kind of getting ahead if they want to get a class out of the way. And then there's also students on IEPs, which is, is kind of a separate process. You qualify for ESY or extended school year based on your IEP needs. That's an IEP team decision. So it's kind of, kind of multiple routes. I mean, you know, the list of 15 things.
One hat doesn't fit all.
Right. There's different ways to get into each one.
So if a student does not have an IEP and needs to recover credits, but does not want to go to summer school or it's not offered, is there another avenue that that student can take?
Yeah, Lauren talked about learning centers.
Yes.
And then ELO.
Okay.
Those are two other options.
Okay, thank you. Just a few more questions, just, just to get to know. On slide number six, the academic time data, you said that that hasn't changed with the word decoding, comprehension and writing and math. Will that be kept in place? Because I mean, if it works, don't fix it, right?
Yeah, if it works, we're going to keep truckin'.
Okay, good. So we're not going to change that at all. And, and I noticed that other districts also participate in our summer schools? Yes?
Yes, through two of our different programs. The one yes program, which is a partnership with AbilityPoint, they basically coordinate all of the services. We provide education staff for the morning, but that is a program that comes at a cost. And those fees and everything are handled by AbilityPoint in conjunction with our district. So we, we have a partnership with them that allows students to come in. And then Scope, I would have to check a little bit more into that, but that is an enrichment program that we've put on for years and just opened up to other districts. But there's a fee to be, participate in that one as well.
Super. Thank you. This was great. Thank you.
Stan?
Without making our chief financial officer and Kelly, our superintendent, too nervous because I have a personal wig of personal, a wild important goal of someday having a grandiose summer program planning, but I won't make anybody nervous about that tonight. Yeah, I'll make, yeah, I'll let you at least start worrying about it. We had 11,000 students eligible for summer school. We, we brought in almost 2,900 of them. We brought in almost twenty-nine hundred of them. We have eighty-one hundred, eighty-one total students, which means there's a lot of secondary in our summer school. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the elementary numbers here, I think at the very end of DeeDee's presentation, sorry about that.
Yeah, slide twenty-eight.
Yeah, if you look at the very end, we serve about three thousand kids in elementary, between PK through fifth. And that, like Scope, is a program that serves K through twelve, I'm sure, or K through eight. So you might see some elementary friends that are in some of these other specialized programs, but for the core elementary, it was only three thousand students, around that.
And we use about eighteen hundred staff for summer. So when we talk about that we are going to have to reduce the effort in summer school for next year, how, what numbers are we looking at reducing the most? It seems like, since we do have the learning centers, and I'm glad you paired this report with the previous report about our reading, it seems like that's where we're going to have to really target our summer school for twenty-four. Am I on the right track there?
And I could jump in. Susan and I have obviously, and DeeDee, we've been having conversations around this. The plan would be that what we were doing prior to COVID and summer of nineteen, we would continue to do summer of twenty-four. So that would include pretty much all of the high school stuff that Lauren talked about last time. All of that was already going on prior to the credit recovery options, ELO and all of that. What we've added has been probably, I don't know, mostly middle school, but middle schools, we've added quite a bit as far as expense and scope, and then a lot of the, what we've been doing in elementary. And you heard DeeDee mention it. We're looking at narrowing the scope and then really targeting, you know, I love how Amanda Scherzel was talking about focus. What we really need to do is get focused in summer school. We know it works, right? We've seen the results, but we also know if we spread it too thin, it may not be as impactful and effective. And we're also looking at outside sources. There's title money that we can use for some of this. There's at-risk money we can use for some of this. And then at the middle school level, we're really looking at either grant opportunities or business and industry partners, like all the folks that left at the beginning of the meeting, because a lot of what middle school has been is the experience, right? Going out on field trips, hands-on STEM things from Pittsco and Avid and those sorts of things. So it's kind of a combination of all of that, but it definitely is going to be reduced, especially the staff. I mean, I think that eighteen hundred staff number is going to be a lot, lot less.
Yeah, and it's very clear that whenever, that's your number-one cost for summer school is staff and the number of staff you needed. Well, I'll just plant a seed, then. I just think that when, as we are looking at twenty-four, when you look at these kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade numbers, two-fourteen to two-eighty-eight, that's where, if we're going to have to take a surgeon's scalpel, that's where we ought to really concentrate on in twenty-four, especially when you talk about the reading scores that we want to improve on.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you. Hazel?
I was coming, I'm going to come up behind Stan on the numbers of employees that we have, the staff-employees. What, when you prepare to hire your staff, what was your goal for the average teacher-to-student ratio?
Fifteen to one in elementary.
And how close were you to that?
Kuda and I worked really hard to make sure that happened without opening more sites. So in some of ours, quick average, I would say eighteen to one, but you saw our attendance as well. So on any given day, you could have had five students in the room with two adults. So it really just depended on the day, but we tried to stick to fifteen to one, and some sites went a little over and some sites went a little under in elementary.
All right. And then we were talking about learning loss. If there wasn't summer school provided, what is the average learning loss a student suffers from if they don't have this extra help?
That's a great question, and I would like to do some action research on that. But I'm thinking about sixteen days of continued education, and if we did not have that, and what opportunities our students would have during the summer to continue learning would differ by family, to be honest with you. So I think it depends on the student and their family plans over the summer and what goes on. And I think it would just be, it would vary, kid to kid.
Okay, because I know I've heard teachers talk about learning loss and catching up, you know, when school started, and I just wondered if you knew that if there was a percentage of loss that they have. How can we increase? Now, I noticed that we have these different programs, like the Indian Education Program, where I know that we have around fifteen hundred native students enrolled in our program, and we have sixty-five students attending summer school. How can we increase these numbers and try to give this opportunity to more students?
So each week, they could host up to thirty students just based off of staff and that particular funding in that particular program. We did actually add efforts this year to try to increase enrollment. We hired some temp support to actually actively call parents and families. So those students who were eligible, we put people in place to try to make some of those phone calls. We worked with buildings to send out additional communication. And again, like Amanda said, it's just, it's family preferences, and we even had these staff call students who were not showing up on the first days, because we know we needed them there and our opportunity to serve a large capacity and build, you know, whatever programming we wanted to is, that window's dwindling. So we did put in some additional efforts to try to target. We shared flyers at events, pass information out, parent links. So we're always open to other ideas and avenues for getting the word out, but that, depending on the program, and obviously, programs that are specific for students with disabilities, there's a very targeted population, but we did put in additional efforts like that to make it phone calls to try to get them in and get them the service and the opportunities.
Okay. And I just want to say one other thing. I had the opportunity to visit a couple of the sites, the summer school sites, and everyone was very happy, and the atmosphere was robust and just everybody was working, and it seemed like they were enjoying their time, and the kids seemed real happy. So congratulations.
Ernestine?
I want to go back to Amanda's reading presentation and how we've been training teachers all the way up for that. I've had parents say to me, oh, I could be a teacher. Anybody could do this. And yeah, Kathy, and you know that once you've been in the classroom, but particularly about the reading. I just am so impressed, and I'm so grateful that then we've had the summer school to extend that so that the kids that hadn't made it in the school year, they're not left to the parents alone to try to help that child, because parents haven't had the training. This is a very specific kind of knowledge about the way the brain works to learn. It's not an automatic thing that a child will do. And I'm just so grateful, and I'm grateful that we've taken this letters right up to the high school, middle and high school level. I have a student from twenty years ago that has recently called me, and he said, I couldn't read very well. How come my high school teacher didn't know how to teach me to read? Well, now our high school teachers can know how to teach them to read. So I just really am, I'm throwing confetti and laurels, and thank you for all that we're doing to help those kids. And taking my hat off.
Thank you. I think we all are taking our hats off. Our summer school program has really proved itself that it helps kids, and it breaks my heart that we're going to have to look, cut it back in some ways, because that means we won't be able to help some kids that still need it. I just have one question, and that is, do we do any kind of tracking once the kids that were in summer school come back in in the fall? Do we look at their fall screeners and see, you know, have they gone up or back from spring?
Yeah, so the slide that I shared with you that had the colored bars broken down, that is students who were assessed in the spring of last year on one of the qualifying screeners. And then as they transitioned into the next grade level, if they were still in Wichita Public Schools, their data's in there on the same assessment, and that shows the sustaining, the increase, or the decrease, which is why we add some screeners. Like, we shouldn't really be screening first grade and let our name, let our sound, right? That skill should be learned in kindergarten, but we screen it for a number of reasons in first grade, summer school being one of them, so that we can show the data.
And we help catch them up when they may not have gotten it all in kindergarten. We've got them ready to go for first grade. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that, and I see those two slides. I just didn't quite understand what they were, so thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We look forward to seeing how you are magical workers to get us to have summer school this summer. Next item.
Next item, consent.
Kathy, do you have anything to pull this time?
Just D two.
C two?
No, D two.
Oh, D two. Thank you.
Nothing to pull.
No, I have nothing to pull.
Diane?
I have nothing to pull.
And I have nothing to pull. Stan?
No consent items to pull.
Okay, Ernestine?
Nothing to pull.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we accept all items but D two?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent items except for D two. Second?
The motion was made by Kathy and seconded by Julie. Please cast your vote. Motion passes seven-zero. D two. Kathy?
Yes, I just want to know how much money is left to use for the restorative practices in the budget, and are we going to continue on with this program? Esau said today that in his parental opinion that the restorative practices was not working. And I don't know what it's supposed to look like if it's working. I think that we would need some data and some feedback from our educators to know if it's working, but I'm just curious to know how much money is left.
How much money is left? So what this agenda item does, when we submit agenda items, usually there's two boxes. You can click this budget year, next budget year. This did not get checked for this budget year. So all this particular agenda item is doing is allow, is we're not allocating any more money. We're just being able to spend it out of this budget year. That's all.
Right. Do we know how much that is?
I think three, three million.
It's three million? And what was the total before that we agreed upon?
Well, I think it's between five and six.
Was it between, but this is the remaining amount, and so we will have no more funds for restorative practices after that is used?
Well, I think the hope is that once we're finished with this year, we have trained internally and have the capacity to keep doing it ourselves.
Right, okay. That's all I needed. I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve consent item number D two.
Okay. It was moved by Kathy and seconded by Ernestine that we approve this. Please cast your vote. Motion passes seven-zero. Next item?
Next item, under policy, first review, proposed updates of BOE policies.
Okay, this is our first read on these two policies. They're on non-resident enrollment and admission and small and manned aircraft, which are drones. Are there any questions, concerns, information that you'd like to use or suggest for these policies before we move it to next meeting? Okay, I'm seeing nothing, so we will move these two policies to our next meeting for the second review. Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy?
I'm sorry, I do have a question.
All right.
Thank you. Under the policy five-five-oh-six with non-resident enrollment and admission, under the notes, it says, update policy to meet state statute, which allows non-resident students to attend schools in USD two-five-nine if there are open seats. Does that mean that if we do not have availability, those students will not be allowed to come into our district?
Yes, we're matching to what the state requires. They passed a law, but we have the option, if we're full in a particular school, to tell the parent that they can't attend, can't enroll in that school because we're already at capacity.
And that's not the building, that is the district? That they cannot enroll in the district or in that building?
Well, they can't, they enroll in the district, but they attend a building, and so they're selecting a building to attend. Like, for example, a Mays student wants to come to Northwest. If we have room, then we admit them to the district.
Correct.
And, but they, and they can attend that school. If we don't have room, they could say, well, I'd take another high school. So it's, we look at buildings because that's where we have capacity.
Yes.
But, but we admit children by the, into the district, not into a school.
And we give our local students preferential treatment first?
That's correct.
Correct, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
And we're allowed to do that by this law.
We are allowed to do that.
Yes. This particularly affects probably more than Wichita. It affects the little school districts around across the state, because they just don't have as much capacity. And if they had, you know, fifteen kids want to come in, that would, they'd have to hire new teachers. They don't have money for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on those? Okay. Next item?
Next item, authorization to publish notice of hearing.
Okay. Any, we'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So this is also part of the law, that you've had the first read of the agenda, of this board policy tonight, the P five-five-zero-six. We're required by law to hold a hearing, a public hearing, just like we do at the budget, so that people can come and comment if they would like or ask questions. And tonight, we're authorizing that, the notice of hearing, of the hearing at the next meeting, and then take final action November thirteenth.
And that hearing would be before the school board meeting starts, as we've done all of our hearings? Okay. Any questions on that? I do think we need to vote on this tonight, so I need a motion.
I move that we have a public hearing on policy fifty-five-oh, P fifty-five-oh-six, and you need one, you don't need one on that second one, right? Just fifty-five?
No, it's just that fifty-five.
That we have a hold of a public hearing on November thirteenth on policy P fifty-five-oh-six, non-resident enrollment and admission.
I'll second.
It was moved by Stan, seconded by Diane. Please cast your vote. Motion passes seven-zero. Next item?
Next item, second review, proposed updates of transportation policies.
Okay, we did have a first read on all of these policies the last time, and so tonight we will be voting on them. So are there questions, concerns, anything that you have discovered as you've had this length of time to look at these policies?
Ernestine?
I just would like to have Kelly say to the public what I had to ask him today. What does it mean, updates to AIPs?
The, I'll make sure I get that one right. So the AIP is an acronym for the administrative implement, implemental procedures. So the board policy has the summary at the top, and then how the board asks the administration to implement the policy. So AIP is a term that we use internally for kind of that, nuts and bolts of the policy.
Thank you.
Okay. Stan?
Yeah, I was just going to move that we adopt the recommended proposed changes to the listed policies of seventy-three-hundred, seventy-three-oh-three, seventy-three-twenty, and seventy-three-twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, I heard Julie first. It was moved by Stan, seconded by Julie, that we adopt these four policies. Please cast your votes. Julie? Here we go. Motion passes seven-zero. Next item?
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Katie.
Welcome, Katie.
Good evening, Superintendent Beilefeld, President Logan, Vice President Albert, and BOE members. I have three items tonight that I wanted to discuss during the UTW report time. And the first one is, one year ago, I brought the pre-K Task Force report to you. And it was from March of 2020. And I still have not heard anything about any of those items. So, I just wanted to bring that back. I know I've given it to some of you. But there is one thing that's not on the pre-K Task Force report that is really causing a kind of a predicament for our pre-K teachers. And that is the end of the first class is the beginning of our pre-K teacher's lunch, right then, or their planned time. And so, they have to choose between walking their students out and connecting with families or taking their plan or lunchtime because it's combined in the middle. And so, we've asked the last couple of years if we could start five minutes and five minutes early and start five minutes late for pre-K. But there's some grant that is, I don't know, I don't know a lot about it. But the time change would need to be included in the grant. So, I'm asking if you could please make that happen for our teachers because I just think it's so important that our teachers are able to go out and connect with families after that first session. When I subbed in pre-K, we were down a para. They didn't have a sub, so there was two of us. So, there would have been no one to take the students out if I wouldn't have taken them out at the end of the session because there was just me and the other person. And she had to take the kids to the bus. So, just thinking about that, we're asking our teachers to either connect with families. And this is like the first time that a lot of our students are going to school. And we really want to connect with parents. And of course, our teachers are going out and they're missing part of their lunch or part of their planned time so that they can connect with these families. I mean, but we're making them, we're asking them to make that choice. So, I would like to ask each of you to look at that time. I think it's important for us, we know how important it is for families to be involved in education and how, like, at such a young age, just how important that is. So, that was the first thing I wanted to bring. I know we've asked several years for this. So, the second thing is workload. And I know I've talked to you a lot about workload. One of the things, I spoke last week with Gillan, I'm sorry, Deputy Alvarez, Superintendent Alvarez, and the HR, Mr. Hudspeth, was about an increase in calls about middle school. Teachers are, they're being given like homework to collect data on maybe how many positive interactions are you having with students in your classes? And they're being asked to do this outside of professional development time. And to our teachers, it feels like homework and like extra paperwork to do. And so, I'm asking if you could please look at cutting that down just because our teachers, they need to focus on their lessons and their students. And I just think that they already have enough work on their plate and we're asking them to do one more thing. If someone wants to come in, like a data leader, and look at those positive interactions, that'd be wonderful. But to ask our teachers to track all that on top of grading and connecting with families is just too much. Last, I just wanted to revisit the sped situation. I know that we have a shortage of sped paras and sped teachers. We've brought several different things to the district. And Dr. Evans, he's been wonderful. At one of our schools, they're piloting a sped, new way to do IEPs. And it's causing a lot of stress on our sped teachers. And it's actually adding over 20 meetings to their calendars throughout this school year. I've talked with sped department and I've talked with also Deputy Alvarez. And I've shared the increased workload that we're putting on these teachers, piloting this new program. But it's a lot for anyone to add all those meetings to their calendar. And if we already are in a shortage, I would, I just think that if teachers are saying it's too much stress for them, we should listen to them and maybe pause and reevaluate those things. Because I don't want, I'm hearing already from sped teachers, the amount of stress on them with all the things they're being asked to do. And so, to ask them to meet with all the teachers in additional time before the IEP meeting is just too much. It's way too much stress. One day, it was so much stress that a whole team of sped teachers, three of them, went home from school and couldn't stay. They were so stressed out. And so, those kids didn't get their minutes that day. So, again, I know we really want to recruit sped teachers, but I'd appreciate if we could keep the ones we have. Last week, I subbed in pre-K and it was such a wonderful experience. There were 19 students. And, I mean, they were just wonderful. It was, the teacher that I worked, that I subbed for, her para had been there 24 years and she had been there 23 years. And those kids, they knew those routines. It was unbelievable. Everything was so organized. Every, I don't know how we got through all the things we got through. And there was so much learning and they were singing their ABCs. And some of them, you could tell English was not their first language and they knew their ABCs. I mean, they could recognize their name. Everything was so organized. Names were on everything, pictures of, you know, on their name tags. And they knew where to sit. They could recognize their, it was unbelievable. There are some amazing teachers in our district. And it was really nice to hear about summer school and just see the progress from earlier on the slides about the growth our students are making. And so, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're right, we have many, many, many wonderful teachers in this district. Next item?
Next item, under reports, service employees international.
Good evening again, board members.
Good evening.
Good to see you guys again. Just a few items from us. Thank you for passing the contract this evening. You know, we kind of had a wrestling match over it. And we do know that it's your hands that are tied because of the things that Mike Harris talked about, about the state legislators. And, you know, no matter what political affiliation you're with, I think we all care about funding schools. And, you know, I hope that we will all push against those legislators who do not care to do the work of the people like that and replace them or change their mind. Next, I wanted to let you know that I've been getting a lot of calls from paraprofessionals. A lot of them are asking me how to put their two weeks' notice in. And the whole point is the violence of the students. They're getting kicked and hit. And, you know, one of the things that bothered me a little the other day is I have a lady that texts me a lot about these things. And she said her special little friend that she watches was all over the room. He climbed all over the place, hit her, urinated in the classroom, ran down the street and they had to chase him. And she's like, "This is an everyday thing." And, you know, I know we're here to educate kids and we're here to make them smarter, but there's a point where they're just not even behaving to the point that the paras are chasing them all over the place. And what she really told me that concerned me was, was that it used to be we'd keep track of how many times this student hit staff. But now, they're just keeping track of the length of the duration of the student's outbursts. And so, I'm still concerned that you guys aren't getting all the statistics from all the buildings. I still have a very strong feeling that we're whittling it down into a spreadsheet. And we've got to document these things when these kids do them. You know, when a paraprofessional gets hit or kneecapped or stabbed with a pencil, they're very apprehensive to file charges against that student because nobody wants to see these kids go to jail. We just want to see them graduate from high school and become the best person they can be. But the problem is, is it doesn't seem like we're piling it on on those students and actually getting it in their IEPs and their records so that we can make a difference. So, please, focus on that. I don't have anybody in particular to point fingers out. But I would say, please, make sure that that's not going on because that's not helping the kids or anybody else to keep our statistics nice. But the building's not really being functional. And last but not least, I would ask the board to go back and look at a policy change that was made a few years ago. And it has to do with the 7% rule. And I have some emails from the Chief Human Resource Officer before Mr. Hudspeth, but this all happened in about 2020, when you guys made this change. And what you did was, it used to say that if a person got a promotion, they would get a minimum of 7%, okay? And the policy got changed to say that they would get a maximum of 7%. And so, we kind of stayed on that rule. But since then, I've had employees that have been promoted that didn't get 7%. They got less than 7%. And it's my understanding that things that have to do with negotiations and that are mandatory topics of negotiations, like wages and things like that, you guys can't merely change that in a policy. That has to be negotiated. And I know I'm past my 60 days to file unfair labor practice. But I would be very hopeful that you guys would go back and look at that because the conversation between myself and the past HR department was that, "Oh, well, we always give them 7%. So, you know, even though we change the language, it's going to stay at 7%." And unfortunately, I don't think that's what's happened in practice. And I would like you to look into that and see if you can remedy it because when somebody gets a promotion and they're moving on into a new job, we want them to be happy about that. We don't want them to be begrudged because they got less than what the policy's always been. So, if you could, please look into that. We would greatly appreciate it, okay?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
For the students that you were talking about, the violence, those were in the special ed?
No, I mean, not all, just special ed. They've got paras that work with them. So, yes, there's a para working one-on-one with that student. But that's the whole thing is when it just becomes so disruptive for the rest of the class.
No, I understand. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, but it's not all special ed. It's what I want to make sure and clarify that, you know, special ed, a lot of those kids have IEPs and we can't do things. But I want to remind everybody that special ed's just not the naughty kids like I was, you know? It's our smart kids. It's like my daughter. You know, we've got kids that are in special ed because they're gifted and they do great things and they will be, you know, great people to say, "Hey, that was a USD 259 student." So, thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
Esau, what policy number is that you're referring to?
Oh, gosh, let me pull it right back up. I've only got it as the 7% rule in the email. And I would have to read through the whole policy to find the exact one. Do you guys mind if I follow up with you on that?
Oh, that would be great. Because I don't have a policy to refer to.
Yeah, and there's quite a few policies, so it would take me a minute. And I think everybody's ready to move on with their evening. So, okay, thank you.
Yes, if you can just get the information to the superintendent, he'll share.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Next item, Superintendent Swart.
All right, thank you. Have, it's been busy. It's been good. It's been busy. So, I did want to follow up on a couple of things from this evening. Kendra Holly was here again about ibutirol. And we did get, I don't know if you caught it, but he talked to Kimber about this. And so, I'll be able to share some information with you guys about kind of where we stand as a district and some legislation they're working on that I think would allow for some possibilities for us as a district. So, I just wanted you all to know that that isn't, we're not ignoring him. We're listening to him and they are working together. A couple of things, just kind of looking in the rearview mirror that have been going on. This is Hispanic Heritage Month, so we are seeing celebrations in that neck of the woods, including this weekend, we have some things going on. I also want to just call out or bring to everyone's attention some traffic and safety concerns. You know, we have busy roads and busy, you know, kids that don't always pay the best attention, drivers that don't always pay the best attention. And depending on the time of year, you know, the sun comes up at different times and it can be hard to see in the morning. So, just asking everyone, you know, during this school time, to slow down, look both ways, watch where everyone's going so that we don't have anything tragic happen. An update for everyone on strategic planning. We've had really good turnout for our listening sessions. Those concluded two weeks ago. We have an open online survey that's also allowing for feedback. And we should be able to, I think the 18th of October is when the planning team will get their report from the group out of KU to hear all of the information that they can share with us about future goals or keeping current goals and then where we move from there. Shout out to, well, a couple of things. Still have staff needs in the district, especially Nutrition Services. I believe last I talked to Fabian, we're down 59 positions there, which is quite a few. But on the good news, we've been making headway in hiring paras. I know Esau mentioned the paras. We still have a number of unfilled positions, but we are making headway in that. And we've had a meeting internally to strategize about speeding up the process and maybe opening different doors to get people in for us. So, a couple of things on just the calendar front. I served pancakes at Jimmy's Diner with Grace Med as a fundraiser for them. I did two rotary presentations. I did not know there was a breakfast and a lunchtime rotary on the west side, but I attended both of those and spoke about the great things we do at the district. I was able today to speak at the hearing for, give testimony at the hearing for the Special Committee for Education that's meeting right now in Topeka. I did it via Zoom, but spoke specifically to the challenges that urban districts face. And was able to, I think, brag some because in the midst of the conversation, some things came up about needs assessments. And I didn't realize they were optional. There's districts that aren't doing them. And so, I was able to say, you know, in Wichita, we didn't know it was optional. We've done the needs assessment. You can go online and you can see every school we have. So, yeah. So, they weren't talking about us, but I was able to brag on us and all the good work that we've done and how it has guided our work, how we have done things about attendance because of the needs assessment. We've done things about para-training because of the needs assessment. So, it was a good experience. I'll share with you guys my slides, just so you can see what I said. Nothing that will surprise you. Couple other meetings. I met with Katie Warren of UTW. And then, I think I've told most of you this, but I have regular meetings with my DLT folks. But I'm also setting up meetings twice a year with a lot of the executive directors. So, Amanda and Chris and Holly and Ryan Allman, Melissa Zimmerman from the Special Ed Department. So, partially just to get to know them, develop them as leaders, partially say, "Well, what do you do here?" You know, "Tell me about what you do." So, it's been educational for me to kind of get a feel for that level of leader that in a lot of times is our next leader up in the district. And we need to invest in them and know them. I really value what Chris said tonight about instructional leadership because it was kind of one of his last slides and he glossed over it a little bit. But we all know that a great principal in a building makes all the difference. And when we can free up the time of that principal to really be the instructional leader and get into classrooms and look at the data and work with teachers, it makes all the difference. So, we've been doing a lot of things, and I'm not sure how aware you are, of all the things that have been going on prior to me to develop leaders in the district. And that's really, I feel like, one of my main jobs that doesn't show up right away in the data, doesn't show up right away in the culture, but is a huge system piece that we have to keep focused on. So, he did mention it's National Principal Month. So, we thank all of our principals for all of their work. It is a very, very hard job, but one of the most rewarding and fun, in my opinion. So, last couple of things. The last Thursday, I was able to co-host the launch premiere of the Road Trip Nation project. So, I have a little handout that I'll give to all of you about that. This was a project that I came to the board a while ago and talked to you guys about. And now, it's here. It actually happened. So, last Thursday, it aired on PBS. The second piece of this, the second 30 minutes of it, will be this Thursday night at 8:30 on Channel 8. be this Thursday night at 8:30 on Channel 8. So you can check that out and promote it. There's five young people that are super cool and super fun that are the road trippers on this, and they go around Wichita and the surrounding area, just looking at cool futuristic careers that we have in Wichita. And my guess is that everybody that watches this will watch it and say, I didn't know that was in Wichita, because it's, it's just fascinating some of the things that are going on in our community. So, last couple of things. Next week, we have parent-teacher conferences. We talked about the data, how important that is for parents to engage with that. We've systemized that as a district, so it's very clear when it is. All the kids are out at the same time, so hopefully that eases a burden on families from, not all families have kids in four schools like ours does, but if you have kids in multiple schools, it makes life a lot easier. And then probably the most exciting thing of the week is the events at East High that will be going on to celebrate the 100th anniversary, starting Friday and continuing on to Saturday. So hopefully you've seen it in the paper and you've seen it publicized and seen the videos, but we'd love to see all the community there, and I know a lot of you guys will be there too. So, that's all. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, under Reports, Board of Education.
And if you, Board, the change in the, the way that we're doing things, this is reports, this section. If you have a request, it comes further on down. So we've split the reports and requests apart. So with that, do you have any report, Ernestine?
Well, I want to just piggyback on the happy birthday, East High. But the interesting thing is that when that school was born 100 years ago, it was not called East High. As a matter of fact, the board at the time had a discussion and a vote, and they did multiple votes because some wanted to name it Roosevelt. Now, I want you to think about, 1923 was before Franklin Roosevelt, so it was based on wanting to name it after Teddy Roosevelt. And the others wanted to name it Wichita High School. The students voted for Wichita High School, and so the students won. The board changed even those people who had wanted to make it after Teddy Roosevelt. That building, and I hope everybody has been by and knows, that was such a spectacular building in 1923 that people came from all over to see this amazing building that was built on the Princess of the Prairie, because we were pretty small. I mean, we, we were big in Kansas, but we were small compared to places like Chicago and even Kansas City. So to have such a magnificent building in 1923, it was, it was a tourist attraction. But it wasn't until this building was born, I believe it was 1929, am I correct? It was '27 or '29, that this became North High, and that building then, instead of being Wichita High School, became East High. So I hope that this weekend, that you will all come, and I especially call out to any alum to come to East High. And the way that I think it's going to separate is if the current students and their families and friends are going to be on the lawn, and if you're an alum, you can have a tailgate party in the parking lot. And I'm going to be tailgating, so come and meet me on Friday or Saturday at East High. That's all.
Stan?
No report.
Oh, I thought you'd try to top that.
No, that was good. That was, no, that was good. That's part of the draw, I have no report.
No, I have no report tonight. Diane?
Okay, just a few of the highlights from the last board meeting is I attended the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation at the Cedric County Commissioners Meeting, and our own Maria Curry from our Strategic Communications Department was able to share some highlights from the community, and there were also some other WPS team members present during that day. So Maria, thank you for, for your work there. I attended a webinar for outcomes-based governance, and it was about engagement and commitment to fostering student-centered excellence in education for school board members. I attended Open Streets ICT for Douglas, and so thank you to the WPS staff and the UTW members. Each had a tent there, and they're all passing out books to, to all kids that were passing by. And in a continued effort to reach out to community partners, Hazel and I toured Textron Aviation and with the K-12 Program Manager. We discussed our Future Ready Center for manufacturing, challenges, challenges in the workforce and the future of that, and had a robust conversation and toured four different facilities across the Textron plans. I attended the KSB Legislative Committee Regional Visit and also attended the Teacher of the Year banquet, and that is where eight finalists are selected from throughout the state. And we had, excuse me, our very own Joanna Farmer was selected to represent USD 259, to represent us, and she's doing an excellent job, and she's a teacher out of Southeast High School. And then also I had a classroom visit at Spate, which we mentioned earlier, with the third grade reading slideshow. But I attended kindergarten and first grade classrooms to watch the literacy instruction, and so I want to give a special thank you to Mrs. Sanator and Mrs. Hall. And they really are shining stars in our district and a true representation of the art and the science of the word recognition routines and just the great instruction that's happening within the district. So it was a pleasure and honor to be able to witness that. And I'm proud that the district has shown that this is a top priority for early childhood literacy, and that is really where our priorities should be. So with that, I'm finished.
Thank you. Hazel?
I want to just say something. I feel like my dad was very wise, and he gave, gave me a lot of words of wisdom as I was growing up, to guide me in my life. Some things I didn't understand until later in life. And one thing that he did say to me is that you're only as good as your tools in your belt. And I think that I want to say to our superintendent that I think he's doing a wonderful job, and it's really nice to hear your report and how you're out in the community and making a good presence, and, and it's, it's good. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity to attend the Earhart PTO meeting. I am, it's a very active group. I'm currently working with them to purchase a teepee, which will have a grand opening during Earth Day in April. So we're working on fundraising for that. I was also able to attend the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, where, as Diane said, Maria Curry was there, but what she didn't say is that Maria is also the president of Hispanic Chamber, and we're very proud of you. I gave a presentation to Riverside Community Group and gave an update on our district. I was able to attend the West High Eighth Year Sports Hall of Fame induction ceremony, where they inducted eight former graduates from 1958 to 1989, and 1956 swim team and 1966 basketball team into their Hall of Fame. I dropped in Open Streets and was there for a few hours to help pass out books. And as Diane mentioned on our visit, as a board, we all appreciate and applaud our community partners for their connections that they are making with our students for their future. Kate Gregory, that, who oversees the K-12 Program Manager, she recently hosted an extensive tour at Textron Aviation, and we learned of the many opportunities available to our 259 students. All the, all the facilities that we visited were quite impressive, and we even had an opportunity to sim, take a flight, simulate a flight, take off and land, which we crashed. We, we, neither, we didn't do very well. But it was a great visit and a great opportunity to see, again, another of our great partners in education. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Julie?
Well, I'm also excited to celebrate East High's birthday this weekend. Both my daughters are East High grads. The only other question that I would like, just like for you to clarify for all of us, Superintendent Beilefeld, Kathy and I may have been the only ones that had the question, but I know originally we were planning on tonight hearing some, a report on the demographic study, and you had shared with us in agenda planning today why you were postponing that. And so just in case anyone else was wondering, either on the board or in the public, could you just give us that information?
Yes. Yeah, I'm glad you asked. So we did the demographic work, got it back right around August, and they had projections for this year as far as what was going to happen with our, our student population, and they projected out more than this year for the next 10 years. Then we, we had September 20th, which is our count day, and there was a pretty decent discrepancy between what they projected and what really happened. They were projecting a bigger enrollment drop than what we had. So what we're going to have, which is great news, but we're going to have, we're going to kind of rerun the numbers, so to speak, here over the next month or six weeks, because we want to give you guys, and we need for a master planning process, as accurate of information as we can get. So, yeah. So I should have clarified that with everybody, but it came up at one of the agenda reviews, but not the other one. So, so I will let you know kind of what our, what our plan is for that information. Because of the nature of the information, we want to make sure we get it right before we kind of go public with it, so to speak. And so we're going to go back and kind of re-crench, not we, but the, the group that were paying to do this, they're going to go rerun the numbers, and then we'll have hopefully something more accurate for you here in the next four to six weeks. So.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
I continue to echo what everyone has said. Superintendent Beilefeld, I think that we're all very pleased with the progress that you're making within your own professional life as well as for the district. So I thank you. I continue to love to serve our community and to serve on the school board, and I love the relationships that I'm building with administration as well as the teachers and the principals. And why I didn't know this was National Principals Week, I don't know. I'm glad I know because I'm, I love to recognize the principals with that. Having said that, I've been doing a lot of subbing in different districts, so I'm, I'm excited that I get to be around the kiddos. And I did have, I really had a great moment with a fourth grader in, in Derby. In fact, it was your old school Oaklawn. And I taught PE, so there was no books. And this girl, she just was terrified to kick the ball, and the students were rolling it to them. And she says, I don't want to kick the ball. And I said, are you afraid that you might not kick it and your classmates might make fun of you and laugh at you? And she said, yeah. And I said, well, just kick it for me right here. No, I don't want to. Okay, fine. So the kids got back in line, and they were all doing it. And I saw her continuing to go to the back of the line. And so I, I said, okay, it's your turn. Get up here right now and kick that ball. I'll tell you what, that student rolled it to her. She kicked that thing across the gym, and she just beamed. That might be a word to a first grader. It might be getting an equation as a high school student, but to see the joy on this fourth grade student that she did it, she did not have the confidence that she could. And to think that, that all seven of us are a little part of a big, big thing. And it just brings my heart so much joy when I hear these presentations. You know, I want, I want to, you know, we have good news, but I want to know what good is happening. What good is happening in our district? Because sometimes we can be so plagued with the negative, and there is so much negative out there. I would much prefer to listen to the positive, listen to those students who kicked the ball who didn't think that they could. That's why we're here. We're here to, to promote every potential that every student has and teacher. So I just wanted to say that. I too went to the Open Streets ICT and saw our wonderful WPS out there and got my picture taken with them, and I just thought it was great. And I guess that's it. That's, I mean, I was going to go on to the next one, but no, I think I've said enough tonight. So that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item? Oh, Ernestine, you head.
I just forgot to say that there's a parade on Saturday morning to celebrate East High. And I hope that even if people can't come out to the, near the, on the front lawn or on the parking lot, that you'll come and watch the parade. And I would like the board members who are planning on being in that parade to raise their hands.
I'm coming later. I can't be in the parade.
And I would like, Hazel, would you tell them what kind of a car you're going to be riding in?
A classic Jaguar convertible.
Black. So come and see this. Thank you. That's all. I just wanted to remind about the parade. Nine to noon.
And then there's a presentation after that, after the parade. There's a presentation after that, and I think several of us are coming to that, too.
Yes.
Okay. Next item?
Next item, under Miscellaneous, New Business.
I do have one piece of new business tonight. After reviewing with Kelly, the board meeting scheduled for November the 27th, that's, is going to be canceled. This is the first day we turned back from Thanksgiving break, and we originally had thought that we would need that time to approve some items, but, but he's been reviewing it, and we'll be able to take care of all of that on December the 11th. So in order to not have all the organization after immediately returning from a holiday, we're going to cancel that November 27th meeting. And so our next meeting will be October the 30th, and then we have a meeting in November earlier and then one in December. So, but that 27th of November has been canceled. Okay? Next item?
Next item, Board of Education requests.
Do I have any? Kathy?
Yes, I have a request. As most of you may know, the city of Wichita is proposing to purchase some of our property at Northwest High School on the corner of 13th and Country Acres. And I would like some more information about that for the board so that we can make a logical and a substantial vote when it comes time to vote for, for that. So that's what I'm asking for, and here's mine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll, Kelly, we'll leave that up to you to check with the city and see what kinds of information you can get out to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Executive Session.
Diane?
I moved the board recess into an executive session to discuss an expulsion appeal pursuant to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 8:40 PM.
There's a motion made. Is there a second?
I second.
It was made by Diane, seconded by Ernestine, that we go into executive session. Please cast your vote.
Did we give ourselves time to stop at the restroom?
Uh, yes.
Two minutes. That's, oh, that's funny.
Motion passes 7-0. We are in executive session. I call the meeting back to order. Next item, Julie?
Um, yes. A hearing was held on Tuesday, September 26th, and Ernestine Crable and myself presided. And I would like to make a motion that we uphold the findings of the hearing officer relative to that appeal.
I second it.
Okay. It was moved by Julie, seconded by Ernestine, that we uphold the hearing officer's findings. Please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Next item?
Next item, Adjournment.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Okay. It was moved by Ernestine, seconded by Kathy, that we adjourn. Please cast your vote.
I'm taking it home with me.
I'm going to abstain.
If it doesn't work, give me your vote, yes or no.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. The meeting is adjourned. We will see you at our next meeting.